Welcome to the regular meeting of the Council on the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, 4/19, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And I would like to know, Councilmember Poston?
President.
Councilmember Lester?
There.
Councilmember Banda?
President.
Vice President Trusten?
Here.
Resident McGinnis?
President.
On the record indicate the presence of City Manager DiGatini and Corporation Council Richard Berettas, proud citizens of the French.
Uh, City Manager Gatin, would you please meet us in the light? (inaudible) Good evening, everyone, to the second meeting of April of the Long Beach City Council. Uh, first, I want to make a very important announcement, um, and wish the Long Beach Governor James Bernstein a happy birthday. And now, Vice President Trusten, would you please provide your report?
Sure. Uh, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. Just a reminder that it is Earth Week, and there are some upcoming events that our community should be aware of. Surf Rider will be having a theme event at the canal on Saturday, the 23rd. The city will be having a shredding event, an recycling from Marston on Sunday behind City Ball. There'll also be recycled towels for sale. Next, I would also like to take a moment to thank you to the Penn City Council for banning plastic bags and for making it illegal for plastic bin or for intentional balloon usage for banning. And I know that in the public city, I'm seen cleaning up and keeping up after others, as do others, and we appreciate all that you do. Also for note, April 13th, 1922, the New York State Governor signed a bill making Long Beach a city. At noon on June 1st, 1922, the city of Long Beach officially began operating. So please visit our website and confusionpoint@slationtail for all upcoming events. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll hand it over to City Manager Gatin for the City Manager's report.
Thank you. Um, the very first item we have today is that through our CDPG grant that we have been talking about for a while, we have a total of four nonprofit organizations that were given money that was never dispersed. So we're going to disperse that money tonight. One of the four will not be here, they will be at a future meeting. And so can I have the representative from, for the MLK? MLK will receive $10,000, and the $10,000 is for a program that they will run Monday through Friday for five days. They're due to participate in three daily activities, including peer-to-peer mentorship, home economics, arts, and scene. (applause) Thank you. Uh, can I have Long Beach someone to represent from Long Beach Reach? Long Beach Reach will receive, Long Beach Reach will receive $10,000. Um, the description for their program is substance mental services funds will address the need for outpatient intensive chemical dependency treatment services, including case management and therapy by funding a portion of established hours. Yours is $10,000 as well.[291.83][291.83](applause) Uh, and the last one tonight is the Sea Kitchen.[302.83][302.83](applause) And these funds will be used to provide fresh produce to 100% of the meals served at the Sea Kitchen, including food and garden and paper supplies.[321.83][321.83](applause) This is just one of the ways that (laugh) for CDPG, we are honored to pass out these grants. Uh, our next presentation will be from Will Melany and M3 to talk about our pigments of.
Thank you. Um, I'm Maria DeConzo from Will Melany &amp; Myers, and my name is Brian Griffith from M3 Partners. Um, we're, we're here tonight, uh, if we could move the slides forward. When we were last here, uh, virtually on December 28th, uh, the City Council noted on a letter of intent which set forth the terms of a proposed settlement of the Haberman litigation that has been pending for three decades. Um, as we explained then, on May 17th, 2021, the court entered a judgment against the city for over $140 million with 90% judgment interest until paid, which amounted to approximately $1 million a month while that judgment remained outstanding. In addition, the court issued in the judgment, uh, allotted the Habermans certain zoning that would have allowed them to build a project in accordance with zoning that was granted to them, uh, in the eighties pursuant to certain settlements. The City Council, the City Manager, and Corporation Council, along with their outside advisors, me from Will Melany, um, and my firm, and M3 Partners, negotiated that letter of intent, which was authorized by the City Council on December 28th. We're very pleased to be here tonight, uh, with the formal agreement that was contemplated under that letter of intent, which the advisors and the Haberman parties reached agreement on this week, last week. Um, next slide, please. The material terms of the formal agreement are the same as those that were set forth in the letter of intent. The major components of the settlement is that the city will pay, uh, $75 million to settle the judgment, which as of December 28th, when we entered into the LOI, what already amounted to almost $150 million. So this is basically a 50% discount off the settlement as it was at the end of the year. Under the letter of intent, the parties agreed that interest would not approve while we tried to negotiate this agreement. And again, under the agreement, that interest stopped on December 28th, and we now have a formal agreement. So the city will pay $75 million. There's an additional $2 million credit that, uh, Habermans have towards certain, uh, zoning benefits that we will talk about a little later. Uh, if those buildings are not built, then that amount is forgiven. And then there's an additional penalty if the city, uh, revokes the zoning that's required, uh, or does something to interfere with the project after, um, this agreement is entered into. The other material term of the agreement is that it does contemplate the city entering into zoning amendments. Um, those zoning amendments will be subject to a future city council meeting with the city plan, or the, uh, the planning and zoning consultant that for the city will present that zoning legislation to the city. Uh, but a draft of it is attached to the formal agreement. Uh, all of that is posted on the website. And so the city would enact that zoning and community benefit bonus policy, which would allow for two 13 and a half story buildings and a parking garage, uh, which is basically under the judgment and the whole zoning, they were entitled to build two 10-story buildings and a seven-story building. So this new, um, agreement really just moves those seven stories from the north side to the south side. It's the same, uh, amount of density that was in the zoning that the judgment found they were entitled to. The formal agreement becomes effective when it's signed by all the parties. So if the City Council approves the formal agreement tonight, then the City Manager would be authorized to sign the agreement. Um, and then the city, its contingent on the city raising sufficient funds to pay the settlement. And then the zoning being enacted and the community benefit bonus policy being enacted, uh, the parties agreeing to satisfaction, delivering satisfactions of judgment and withdrawals of the appeals to move forward, and it does need to be so ordered by the court that was pending, uh, the judgment is pending before. We have the next slide. So the city, um, would pay for the settlement through the issuance of general obligation bonds. Um, two things that is, that have happened that are extremely positive for the impact of this judgment on the city. The first, uh, as CMA presented at the last City Council meeting, is that Moody's Investor Service has actually upgraded the city's, um, credit rating from a VAA3 with a negative outlook to a VAA3 with a positive outlook. That will help the city when they go out to market to, to sell the bonds to pay this judgment. And it's important that, one of the major reasons that Moody's upgraded the city was because of this settlement. Moody's views this settlement as a positive for the city moving forward. Uh, also, last week, on April 9th, New York State enacted legislation that allows the city the flexibility to issue longer-term bonds than are otherwise allowed under New York law. Under New York law, the bonds would have to be a maximum of 15 years. New York State, uh, issued, enacted legislation that allows that to be for 30 years if the city determines that that's the best, um, length for the bond going forward. They also authorized the city to use an underwriting process or a negotiated process, again, so the city could get the best value, um, in issuing these bonds out to the market. Uh, that process will take place once this agreement is authorized. Um, it's too soon to know exactly what the pricing of those bonds will be and what the impact of it will be, but the city will work with its advisors, with its municipal advisor, CMA, with M3, with its bond council to ensure the best possible outcome in selling these bonds to pay the judgment. Can we move to the next slide? As I mentioned, effectiveness of the agreement is contingent on legislation being enacted. The city worked with the city's planning and zoning consultant to draft legislation that's appropriate for the city of Long Beach. It contemplates extending the current residential business A district eastward to Lincoln Boulevard, and then there are certain, uh, modifications to the residential business A district to, um, work for, for the project so that what the city is agreeing to in the formal agreement can be accomplished under the zoning. There is also a contemplated community benefit bonus policy. This is something that, again, the city's planning and zoning consultant, uh, helped draft for the city. It is based off of, of similar, uh, policies that are enacted by other New York State jurisdictions, um, and it allows for builders to, uh, get a bonus off, off of certain zoning by contributing to the community. Um, again, that, the approval of the revised zoning and the community benefit policy will be the subject of a future meeting, um, where the city's planning and zoning consultant will be here to present that to the council. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so that's an overview of the agreement. Again, the full agreement was posted online as well as the, um, the contemplated zoning associated with it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Maria. Um, at this time, does the council have any questions regarding Maria's presentation? Mr. Lester?
First we vote.
Mike?
Thank you for getting us to settle it. Um, but I, I feel, you know, 75 million is a lot, but listen, it's probably the best we can do, so no bitch have that. But I just want to make a couple of things clear. When it comes to the building and the zoning, you said it, the city does something wrong. The way the stipulation reads, if anybody sues, anybody, and the city can be completely innocent and doing everything that they can to try to make it work, and if anybody sues and wins, we're liable for the 25 million. I just, that, that's the case, and I just want people to understand that. Because, you know, when you say the city does something wrong, it's more than that. That's number one. Number two, I, I guess the zoning is something that really bothers me. What it will basically allow, and I understand we can't allow spot zoning, but people are under the impression that this only applies to Haberman, and it's going to apply across most of the oceanfront, where people will be able to build these, you know, 14-story buildings plus, you know, it's 14 plus the level, you know, the additional 11 or 17V plus stuff like that. Um, people don't understand that right now, and listen, I know you put the entire agreement on the, the website, but I think it's 143 pages you put on, something like that with all the, you know, he won't read that. So I just want that part understood too. Because that is something, you know, it's one thing to pay money, and it's another thing when you're changing the character of the town. And, you know, it's something that we, we never really have been in favor of, or we did buildings, but anyway, like I said, it is what it is. So I just want it understood, thank you.
Sure, just to address, um, those two points. One, you are, you are correct that if somebody challenges the zoning legislation and it is, um, bound to be, uh, improper, if, if the zoning legislation is voided, then the penalty is applicable in that instance if the city is not able to cure it, to basically revise it in a way that, that isn't subject to challenge. Um, and then as far as the zoning is concerned, again, I, I do think there will be, I know there will be a fulsome presentation on exactly what this zoning does. Um, this was a very hard fought negotiation that lasted at this point, basically a year. Um, and it did involve give and take on all sides. Um, the zoning is in exchange for not having to pay the other $75 million. So, you know, if you add 75 and 75, you've got 150, which is, we'd be well over 150 at this point. Any other questions from the council? Um, I just have a brief statement. Um, did you have to make a slide? Um, this is regarding, um, this Haberman settlement. Um, this is a bittersweet day for Long Beach. I'm so thankful for Senator Kaminsky, City Manager Gatin, Corporation Council Berettas, Control &amp; Resident, and the Ohio PD team, and our lead Maria DeConzo, and the entry team lead by Moth Mahi and Brian Griffith, and, and of those past and present that helped pull this deal together. Long Beach will always be critical to you. I'm also sad. The residents of Long Beach are going to be saddled with this debt for up to the next 30 years. In 30 years, it'll be 81. People that are five, 10, 15 years old right now, that want to live in Long Beach when they grow up, are going to be paying this debt off for something that happened for years before they're born. It's a cautionary tale for all of us. And finally, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful that we have a justice situation done and are closing this painful chapter in our history.
Look, I think there's some people just need to understand. None of us up here are happy that we have to vote on this. Not that we don't want to settle it, but the fact that we have to vote for this amount of money for something that happened over 30 years ago. This is something no one sitting up here did, people in this room were probably weren't even thinking about this 30 years ago, didn't even know what was going on. But one of the things we said when, when this administration came in is we weren't going to kick the can down the road anymore. Because kicking the can down the road turned this city into a financial mess. Somebody finally had to deal with these problems. And this is what we did. It's not a pretty solution. Unfortunately, it's one we're all going to be paying for, for a long time, but this is something that happened 32 years ago that we're cleaning up now. And that's what we said we were going to do. We said we were going to clean this stuff up. This, we got the super block out of purgatory, and we cut the city's financial score. We went from being the number one financially distressed municipality in the entire state two years ago to, we're falling off the list now. And that's what happens when you don't kick the can down the road, and you take responsibility and you fix the problems, and that's what we're doing here. It's not pretty, nobody here likes it, you're not going to like it, but we, this is a problem that had to be fixed. Because quite frankly, it shouldn't be stuck, it's already going to be stuck on the children and the grandchildren, quite frankly, but even beyond that, this had to be fixed, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Hopefully. All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Banda. Thank you. Thank you. Can you?
Hey, I'm just a public hearing. Um, as I announced earlier, the item has been handed to the agenda by the members of the Senate, and it's on the side of the floor. So our public hearing is in accordance with the vote for it to the City of Long Beach Department of Justice.
Okay. I'm so glad, Mr. Lester.
Uh, focus on the hearing, I'd like to propose an amendment. I would like to add the category of a late afternoon pass. I don't have to detect for a rigid point, but, um, beginning at 4:00 PM for a fee of $6.
Do you have a second? Second.
Now, before... So starting at 4:00 PM?
Get through.
Starting at 4:00 PM, date as admission for $6. Now, before we vote, I would like to discuss the amendment, which is the process. If there's a second, then there's discussion before we vote.
Can I just ask you a question? Okay.
Well, I'll tell you what, while they're mumbling, I'll give you a brief summary of why I'm proposing this amendment. So, for several years now, anybody that goes down on the boardwalk at a few minutes before 6:00 knows there's crowds of people waiting on the boardwalk. They get on the beach when the lifeguards go up at 6:00, and then we stop charging for beach passes. So now what we have is we have large crowds of people coming on the beach when the lifeguards are going off the beach. Creates an unsafe condition. I've been with the chief of the lifeguards, so I've been up and down the beach shooing people out of the water at the 6 o'clock. The idea here is that the people who come down late in the day and are waiting, because quite frankly, they don't want to spend $15, they get on, for a daily pass, they get on the beach late in the day. This affords people the opportunity to come late in the day at a lower fee and potentially then have lifeguard protection when you're on the beach. This is not going to be included in the budget because this is kind of an experiment, so we don't know what revenue it might bring in, so it doesn't impact the budget in any way, except that if we do sell more, I guess it's an added bonus. So that is why I'm proposing it. And I'm going to have to lean around and ask the commissioner of Parks just a quick question. If we do vote to do this, and it's included, can the ticket takers keep track, starting at that time of what tickets are like? We still use the daily, it's the same passes, unless you think you have to have some...
That's going to require a little bit more...
Okay. So that's my question. Can this be done? Can we do this?
I don't know right now.
Okay. So we could always pull it out?
It would have to be a different pass.
Okay.
Could it, um, just be a situation where it would be offered for like, you know, they, when you have to have availability for cash or card, instead of doing a separate pass?
That's something that we actually will have to look into, how that, we can get that done. It will have to be a separate pass, so we will take that under advisement, the team will come together and see what is the best way for us to get that resolved to, for the 4 to 6 timeframe at $6, and how to ensure that we capture the dollars that we receive. So we do a cost benefit analysis. So that's not a question that we can answer right now. We have to, we will look into it and give back to the council at the next meeting.
Okay, well, we haven't voted yet, so...
Right, and there we go. Yeah.
But...
So we will look into it.
Anyone else on the council make comments on the, uh, on the motion?
John, I want to thank you for thinking outside of your box. It's not your idea, and you brought it up before, but now we're moving on it. You know, I can't see this being complicated at all. You know, I know Jones Beach has done it, and other places have done it, and, you know, the fact is that we have ideas, you have other ideas that you brought up that haven't been implemented, and, you know, the only way that anything can be done is by taking the action that you've done today. So thank you.
Like I said, I view it as a safety issue. You know, we want people to be swimming when it's lifeguarding, not we need, until that day gone, so...
Well, John, what I want to do is, I just heard what Congressman Lester said. He came up with several ideas towards the budget process. Um, it's not that we did not implement those ideas, we don't know for sure how well those ideas are going to work. Therefore, we did not include them in the budget, but that does not mean that we will not try them, including parking at the garage with other, and a purchase of possibly two tickets. The gist is not reflected in the budget because this administration, this staff, this executive team, we no longer do aggressive budgeting. We no longer put things in the budget that we have no idea on the type of revenue that it will generate. So I want everybody in the audience to know, as well as the council, to know that every idea we heard, we talk about it, we talk about how to get it implemented, and then that is a trial to see if in fact it will increase revenue, which would be good for us, but we did not and we will not include it in the budget. So I want everybody to know, we heard all of the ideas.
At this time, the motion... We're still working on procedural issues for real time and checking out the code to see if this motion is actually, can actually be voted on. So would you specific language for the amendment, please?
Mr.?
Councilmember Banda?
Request information, the amendment would be section 1, chapter 18. Article 3, Division 2, Section 18-30, created in 2018, 18-30, B2D.
It said, language, say it out.
We're looking for the language.
So whoever's appropriate in the long list within the code, um... Daily passes beginning... Daily passes beginning at four P M. For a cost of six dollars. Seven days a week.
Both residents, non- residents? For both residents?
Yes, same price.
Well, we have to make sure that Corporation Counsel is comfortable with the language, the exact language of the amendment, so I want to give him a minute. He's certainly typing this in my everything.
Section eighteen thirty, subsection B, subsection two, and then the end D to that front. It's a section under, that's under, daily permission charges. Wish them right. Yes. What time do ticket takers leave the?
My turn.
What time do ticket takers leave the post?
Six P M.
Our council, yeah, this goes to the whole of it, because, I don't know, ticket takers, are they paid, you know, to the minute or quarter? So when they work until six P M.?
About ten hours. It's the same hour.
So would this be what, section eighteen thirty, subsection B, sub subsection two, D, and then eighteen D?
Do you want to read it back?
I'm highly, I think I had a twilight daily passes.
It's not a big one, yeah.
Right. Come last thing at four P M., so it says, wait, transition between across season residents and non-residents. Shall chase six dollars, transition to transition to transition.
Good.
Like you said.
I think it's time.
The second is. Kathleen Foster.
Yes.
Kathleen Lester. Kathleen Gander.
Yes.
President Trust.
Yes.
That's President McGinn.
No. We're ending, well, don't worry. So now, now we start the hearing, right? And Ena's presentation. I just also want to make clear that the council will not be voting on the complete item this evening. That we will be voting on this item at another meeting. Yes. So we will not be voting on each house race this evening. Right.
Good evening.
Michael.
Good evening. This is just another presentation on the beach park, Ocean Beach Park revenue. And it's a short presentation. It's really designed to address those questions that were brought up during our discussions back in December, back in March, questions asked. And hopefully, this will answer a lot of questions that people had. Okay, excellent. So, see you on beach ocean park revenue for summer twenty twenty-one. Dave, that's, you go back to the. This is a broad presentation. The one that I sent to you that starts with by chart? April twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, that's, this one says with by chart. I wanted to go down to the other side as well.
Would you be able to pull it up with your computer now and call me something to you?
Sure.
Okay, give me a sec.
There's something else I have for you. With by chart. Can you scroll to the end of the presentation to show us by chart? Yeah, well, just want to make sure you even notice that they're at the end of the presentation. Exactly, that's why I want to make sure you even notice that the by charts are at the end of the presentation. That's why I want to see the end of the presentation. Then that's not going to make the presentation. If you are in the subject header or in the media, send with by chart in the name. There you go. Okay, I see by charts. Yeah. Are we there? Okay, let's start again.
Okay, so this is going to be a short presentation. And it will address those points that were brought up during our last meeting. Next slide. Okay, so what was talked about was the revenue and why are we, why are we questioning this crisis for the beach park? We did it in December, we did it last month. Why are we doing that? Because if we're not properly calculating what beach park costs us, and if we're not collecting revenue to cover those expenses, that means that somebody else is footing the bill. And that somebody else is city residents. So it's not that everybody, not everybody is allowed on the beach, right, during the summer. So only those people that derive benefit from using the beach and these facilities should be really participating in sharing the cost. So there were several good suggestions made about adding other revenue types or other pass types to whatever portfolio of passes we have. And one was just added. Today, there is really no way for us to reasonably and rationally anticipate what those revenue streams will be. And because there is no reasonable way for that, we can really include it in the next year budget. But we all think in administration that those proposals are moderate and good proposal, and they should be tried, and we will be able to evaluate, create a baseline, and see the revenue as generally, those new streams will be material enough to continue to include in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Next slide, please. Okay, cost savings. Questions were also asked about the cost savings. And I just want to say that it's now that we suddenly realize that beach park costs us a million dollars more than what we generate in revenues, and we sat around the table and started to figure out how to save on this. This administration really approaches cost savings strategically and comprehensively. We look at cost savings year round. We compare our budget to actual on a monthly basis. And really to address cost savings is at the time that we negotiate collective bargaining agreements. But we're looking at the proposals and evaluating them, and calculating the cost, and that's how we're approaching cost savings. So not only in a hazard manner where we're saying, well, we're going to just buy it ten percent, and that's how we're going to make the budget. That's not going to make the budget that will only create either on sanitary or in safe conditions in the ocean beach park. Next slide. So we discussed this probably more than once the last year, last summer. We didn't have an optimal weather. The weather was so bad that according to our commissioner, Ron, it really impacted what the revenue we collected in summer twenty twenty-one. So while I don't have a crystal ball, and I can tell you that it's going to be definitely better, I truly hope that it's going to be better. But historically speaking, with the taken approach that it's going to be at least somewhat better, and we can anticipate conservatively, temperature, more of ticket sales this summer compared to last summer. That being said, we still need to raise prices in order to meet what it costs us revenue. It's approximately five million dollars. And while some might ask, well, what's really allocated? Is this person working twenty percent on the beach, eighty percent in building maintenance? This estimate was prepared for five million dollars, not using the book example of the cost accounting. It's an estimate that really allocates direct cost, what goes into all department's operation. It's operations of all administrative departments, who started to really allocate all the cost, and that the debt service would have been considerably more. So here, all the prices, I don't know if you can see them, the reason, probably not. So I can read them to you. I can't even see them from here, but I have framed them. Okay. So for the residential, rather than the individual, the price could go up from seventy dollars to eighty-five dollars. For family, from ninety to a hundred and fifteen. For residents, for resident senior from twenty dollars to thirty dollars. Child from twenty-five to thirty. Economy from a hundred dollars, will stay at a hundred dollars. And the daily will stay at twelve dollars as well. For the non-residents, we double up. So it's a hundred percent more. So for the non-resident individual, it will go from a hundred and forty to a hundred and seventy. For families, non-resident family from a hundred and eighty to two thirty. For senior, non-resident from forty to sixty. A child from fifty to sixty. Economy will stay at a hundred and twenty. Non-resident daily will stay at fifteen dollars. That's it. There was also increasing access from twenty to thirty, and military from twenty to thirty as well. And we will work with the hotels to bring up the total of the tax amount to about seven to five thousand dollars. Next slide. So here, this slide really is visual aid. It shows where the revenue comes from for the city. The reason saying I heard when the robber was asked, why are you robbing the bank? And they said that that's where the money is, right? So that's where the money is, right? You probably can't see, probably won't see the color, but that big blue part of the pie is what we get from the residents in seventy-three percent of the total revenue for the city we get from the residents. Next one. Okay, so this, the by chart, shows how the, why, how the pie is split between different categories of the resident ticket. The resident family represents ninety-two percent of all the total resident revenues we have. And then, next one. And that's how the revenue is broken for the non-residents. So this is about forty percent each, forty-eight percent from non-resident family season passes, and forty percent comes from non-resident daily. And that was a considerable amount, sixty percent comes from non-resident seniors. So I apologize, but the slides are not the regional slides, so they're not showing, but hopefully you can tell the brown and the orange represent the non-resident daily and non-resident family respectively. Next slide. So when we're talking about the different categories, they are abbreviated on the previous schedule that was presented, where it handled the categories and the volume of sales, and twenty twenty-one prices versus twenty twenty-two prices. So this explains what those categories mean.
One, one? One Nevada? Rich, one Nevada? All Nevada, and Rich, can you take that question? The Nevada avenues of pit posts south of East Street get free passes from a longstanding agreement from many, many, many years ago?
That's essentially what it is. I understand it. It was a decades-old agreement back when there was a lot. It was a decades-old agreement back when there was a lot of history to it. I can recall. Where do you know about it? It was the settlement of a land dispute. The city annexed part of the Vodice street. It was part of a previous department, now a temporary. And in consideration for these owners, we just had that managed initially. It was a two-year, it was a two-year agreement.
Good, thank you. Okay. Ina, is that, that wraps it up? That wraps it up. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Okay, this time of the council hearing. So we're, so the council, does the council have any questions regarding the island?
I just have a quick one for Ina. Ina, where in the pie chart, the railroads is at 0%. Can you just explain that?
Sure. Yeah. So on the bottom, in the city budget, railroads are budgeted separately for all other categories. That's why they represent 0% from this. They're included as a category, but not for the dollar volume because dollars are budgeted in a different category on a city budget. And you will see when the budget is posted, the budget is $126,000 for next year, which is $75,000. But the budget is last year, last 52, I think, that Commissioner Ron said. And we can collect a little bit more. Any other, Mr. Bender?
In the 10% weather bump, you assume. Was that based on last year's, 10% of last year's actual useful budget?
It was based on 10% of actual.
On the actual, okay.
Ms. Justin?
I could just want a clarification for what's in the slide. Where's this active, just says four persons with a disability. But in the agenda, the item is correct. That active gets four persons with disability. Actual is...
It's just, okay, I would like to be clarification on that. Sure. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. Couple things. You know, when you said the 10% was over the budgeted amount, I mean, the actual amount. How far under the budgeted amount was the actual amount?
In terms of those sales per category?
Whatever the 10% applies to, which I think it applies to the money.
Well, total revenue that we were short is about $1 million. Now...
From the budgeted?
From the budgeted. We were about $1.1 million short of the budget for 2022.
The weather bump was only $100,000?
The weather bump is actually going to be, because not all the sales are represented equally, right? In the actual amount of revenue collected, you don't have the same amount of tickets sold for each category. So actually, the better weather assumption, calculated to about $300,000.
The weather cost us 300, and we, and how much have we...
So we don't know what that, what weather was...
How much have we done?
Yes. So last year, instead of $4 million for the period from July to Labor Day, we participated to collect $4 million. We collected $3 million. A 10% bump from that is $300,000. The revenue after bump from the prices.
Okay, so, so we gave a 10% bump to what we collected, not the difference between what the actual and the budgeted?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I do have a few questions. Actually, I guess more than a few. I'm trying to figure out, you had given us a slide back on March 30 of Ocean Park, Ocean Beach Park revenue. And you have various things in here. Is that the only things you count? I guess that's the only things you count for revenue for the Ocean Beach Park.
Which I have the presentation. Give me a second. Slide you were looking at.
Page number nine.
I think the difference was about $100,000 to $200,000 in addition to, in addition to pure each pass revenue on that slide.
Not the 300,000?
No, no, no.
The weather bump?
The weather bump is a solid assumption based on past...
No, no, no. I'm just asking the amount. The amount of the weather bump. Ina said it was 300.
Right, across two fiscal years, but one summer, this 2022 summer.
That's all that...
That's all we can respond to?
Yes, yes, totally. And so we added 200,000 rather than 300,000. Is that correct? Ina said three, you're saying two.
No, there's, there's other categories on that sheet.
No, no, I'm just asking the weather bump. The weather bump.
300, whatever Ina says is right.
300,000. Okay, thanks. Okay. So you have here the beach charges, of course. Then you have beach comfort, beach volleyball, and other beach revenue.
Yes.
That's it?
That's all the difference on that slide.
So what about the revenue we receive from the restaurants of, you know, things like Riptides and Tendis Place and stuff like that? That's, you know, 30, 40,000 each. And we had a bunch of those. And the food trucks, that was about 8,000 each. And we had about 10 of the food trucks. And the food trucks are gone, even though we had a contract where we said that they would be able to be here this year. And they're not here this year. And why are they not here? Because of the civil law. And yet, that's something where we gave them, what, $50 million tax write-off? And they're not covering that? I mean, we lost our contract because of them. So tell me if I'm wrong on any of this.
Listen, most of the contracts technically expired. The right to renew was ours and ours alone. We opted not to renew because there was really no space for them to...
But yeah, that's, but we opted, we gave them now. If we had renewed, wouldn't Ingle Verben be responsible for that? Wouldn't they have had to? It was our space that they took. So if we had renewed, we would have had another $80,000.
Actually, actually, Ingle, correct me if I'm wrong, Ina. The space that Ingle Verben is using where the former food trucks were is part of a credit agreement that we have with Ingle Verben. So we are actually being paid by Ingle Verben in another vehicle, i.e. credits.
So why wouldn't that be counted towards beach revenue? We're getting paid money on something that we've lost. Why, you know, because right now, let's be honest. We're talking about a 70% increase for the residents of the city of Long Beach on family cashes over the two years. I mean, we've never had a two-year bump like this, or at least not that I know of. And it went from $50, now it's going up to $85. That's a 70% increase. And now we're saying you're giving a big developer credits? And it's not counting towards the beach, so we haven't taken it out of the pockets of the residents?
Okay, so what we need to understand is that the food trucks are not part of the beach park. The lifeguards don't look after the food trucks. We have a contract with those, and they show elsewhere in the budget. And Riptides, all of those vendors that have leases, that revenue shows within the budget. But it's a different, it's in a different category within the budget. It is not part of the beach park.
But you...
But part of the beach park is that what benefits the residents as far as lifeguards on the beach, cleaning of the beach, sanitation on the beach. Everything that is included in beach park is actually the beach. And so what you're saying that if we include revenue that we've already accounted for in the budget, we just accounted for it in a different area because it is a different category. Beach park is strictly what is done on the beach for the residents.
Okay, Donna, that's...
If I can add to that, I'm sorry. I wanted to answer your question.
Yes.
So really, your question has to do with the cost accounting.
Well, what my question, I'm sorry, one second. What my question has to do with was, we're talking about raising the rates for the residents. And I'm trying to figure out where all this money is going. And now it means, oh, well, that money, even though it's in the beach park, it's in the beach park. Oh, no, well, it's not in the sand, so we don't count. But don't, don't we pay on the beach maintenance for cleaning and repairing of the boardwalk?
I have, I have an answer for that.
Yeah.
Okay. So yeah, it has to do with the cost accounting and the concept of direct and indirect revenue, and direct and indirect cost. So if you want to have an analysis of all the indirect revenues, that would be the trucks, that would be the restaurants on the boardwalk, that would be everything else that we can allocate, that would compare it to all the costs that are both direct and indirect. But mixing it in revenue only applying direct and indirect, but for the cost to apply direct on would create a false picture and would not really have a proper allocation.
Well, I don't see creating a false picture. This is money earned in the beach park, you know? Now, they're saying, telling you on the specials. You have the specials as something coming out of the beach, yet they're in the police budget. When the police take, we have like enforcement, 50,000 in temporaries. Of that, we take 300,000 of the specials there in the police budget. So we're mixing when it's convenient and we're not mixing when it's not. And you know what? But something that happens within the beach park, it just seems to me, well, correct me if I'm wrong, do we pay out of the beach maintenance for cleaning and repairing of the boardwalk?
We do, but we have two departments that are employing city staff that work on beach maintenance as well as building maintenance.
Right, and we separate, we separate 900...
900 allocate based on whatever the head of those two departments is anticipating, had projected to be specifically for the beach. So I would say that no, that whatever is allocated from the beach maintenance towards the beach, it has to do specifically with the beach maintenance.
So you're telling me, what is it, hold on a second.
Well, while you're looking for that, I want to answer a question. You just made a comment that the specials are in the beach park as well as in the police budget. That is not correct.
I didn't see that.
The specials are 300,000 that's in the beach park. Those are the specials that work in the beach park. They just happen to report to the police department, but they're not counted twice. And that's what I just...
I'm sorry. Okay, so Commissioner Walsh, you have 450,000 worth of temporaries that are not specials? In your budget, you have temporaries of 450,000.
That's right.
And they're all separate, they're not the specials?
That's inclusive of...
Commissioner?
That's inclusive of the summertime specials as well as end-of-summer specials as well as...
Donna, you're saying they're not?
Arizona, no, they're included.
300,000 that's in the beach park is included. It includes the 300,000 that they are allocated to the beach park. So they will not be allocated to the police department and the beach park. If in fact, if they are in the police department, that is an error.
Well, that must...
Let me finish. 300,000 in the beach park for special. Those are specials that are hired for the summer that works in the beach park. If he has 400,000 in his budget and 300,000 is for the beach park, that means that there should only be 100,000 within his budget because we are accounting for 300,000 in beach park. They're allocated just as we do beach maintenance to the work that they do.
Yeah, that would be great, but last year was the same thing. 300,000 was allocated to the beach of the specials, and it was in Commissioner Walsh's budget. So I mean, you know, what I'm trying to do is figure out a way that we don't have to charge our residents, who pay enough taxes for the same beach that they've been using for years, a 70% increase, to me, is unbelievable. You know, I look at the different things that the city's charging. Nobody, no, you know, none of our vendors, none of the people that use our property have to pay a 70% increase. Only the residents. It doesn't seem right to me. So I've been asking about the, you know, why it costs almost $3 million to clean a beach? Now you're telling me it's just a beach. It's just a sand, we're talking about it, not the boardwalk, not anything else, not the repairs of the boardwalk. Is that right, Donna?
I thought we discussed this at the various work sessions that we had before, and now we're going to change the entire revenue and...
Wait a second, I'll ask those questions in stage one.
I'm sorry.
All right, if you look at the emails that I've sent, I've been asking about the cost. And I, you know, to be honest, I've been asking about cost now for years. Okay? Now, tell me, is that right, that the, what is it, your cost is almost $3 million? Yes, we do take care of the board, we clean the beach.
That's what I thought.
And that also includes trade benefits? Well, I understand it includes benefits. But I always thought that it did include the boardwalk. And the boardwalk is part of the beach park by definition. So I mean, it makes sense that it would include the boardwalk. But now we have people who are renting part of the boardwalk who benefit from that. People are using the boardwalk, we're paying for it. I don't get it. Why aren't those people, why doesn't that money go into the beach budget? So we don't have to charge as much to the residents?
I can really, in the context of this meeting, we can, probably I can do is that representation on the cost accounting. Yeah, there are direct and indirect revenues and direct and indirect expenses. What I hear you're trying to do, you're trying to figure out all the population of the revenues, direct and indirect, and apply them to the big ocean beach park. The charts, the restaurant, everything. But then, on the cost side, you'd like to take out all the expenses that don't routine specifically to the, like, for, let's say, for town or department, that there was cleaning of the bathrooms. So you would have to, you would have to calculate how that number increases during the beach season.
Okay, so this is what we'll do. We'll take a look at it. We will take a look at, and when we come back, we will look at putting everything within the, what you're saying, asking for, Roy, into the beach park. We will also look at how that affects the bottom line of the budget. And then we will discuss it.
All right.
So we will take a look at that, and we will do exactly what you're asking so that all the residents understand that what is in the beach park was direct cost, indirect cost. And once we move those line items that is other areas in the budget, we will see how it impacts the budget as a whole.
I would like to see that too, Donna. I would like to see what they have...
I just said that I can take care of it.
Okay, because I've been asking about the expenses. Now, a couple of other things. I'm looking at beach comfort, for example. Beach comfort, you collect $8,800. Beach comfort, you had a contract from 2000, I believe it's 2015, and it started out at $8,000. And it was with a 5% increase each year coming out. So a 5% increase each year over the years, we would be about $10,900 now, not $8,800. The same thing with, you have another thing, surf schools and events. What events are we talking about?
Commissioner Brandon, want to, want to be there?
Some of the beach events would include Michelle O'Neill Fit Fest and events that take place up on the beach and boardwalk throughout the year.
So how much do we get for that?
Depending on what city resources...
I give you that, just rough.
I'm sorry. A rough beach event is different. There's a use of facility fee. Now, depending on whether it's during the beach summer season. Now, depending on whether it's during the beach summer season.
I mean, getting there.
I mean, usually somewhere a few thousand dollars for each event. Basically to cover like if there's a, a fee associated for any police that's involved, a fee that's associated for a bathroom attendant to be on duty that day, a fee for recreation police to transport material along and off the beach. So, you know, any, any city resources or manpower that's required, that's the responsibility of the event owner to, to reimburse the city.
But, you know, in order for you to come up with this number of sixteen thousand for the last two years, three years actually, when did you come up with that number?
Most of them, I, I like it to. You know, for like the Aussie Grass Festival, I can give you P and L for any one of those events for what, what we've, uh, what we've charged those event owners for and what we feel like.
Okay, so we have the turks, the two surf schools and the events. Scootin pays thirteen-five. Elliot pays three thousand five hundred. That alone is seventeen thousand. And here we have sixteen, so.
Who does not, who is how much?
I'm, I'm looking at the contract. It's only transference important, thirteen thousand five hundred.
Not for the, I, um, not for the beach?
Yes, for the beach.
For, for the, for, for their store on.
No, no, the store is twenty-two thousand. Twenty-two thousand, it's a seven-year contract, hasn't gone up. Doesn't go up one penny during the whole seven years. Okay, I'm talking about the beach.
The beach is not the.
I have the contract here, if you might.
Okay. I would have to take it to them.
Uh, it's thirteen-five for this year.
They, they have some occasions for the beach, I think, that's the whole.
I'm, I'm just going about the contract. Elliot pays three thousand five hundred. That's seventeen thousand. Looks like we're missing a thousand right there. And then nothing for the events. All right, I guess we, when we go over all of these things, these are the things that I'm looking at though. I'm looking at the volleyball. The volleyball in two thousand nineteen took in a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. This year, you have it projected at a hundred fifty-five thousand, even though their cost of per team has gone up by about twelve percent. And I, I think next year goes up another fifty dollars. I don't understand how we get a projection of that many fewer people, it's not very good, but that fewer people playing volleyball. It's, it's little things and I, I guess like Donna said, you'll go over these things.
Is there actual revenues for the volleyball they paid in the beginning of the year? So this is for this fiscal year twenty-two. We're not going to collect any more than a hundred fifty-five, three hundred. But that's what we've collected and, um, that's what's in the books.
Well, what, what is going on there?
Maybe the, the gentleman that runs the league might be making more money.
He what?
He might be having a higher gross margin. He might be keeping pocketing the difference.
No, we get thirteen. We get thirteen. We don't, you know, whatever he charges is now our business. We get thirteen.
So then, so the number of teams might be a variable.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Why would there be so few teams? Why would there be twenty?
It's happened that many years because of COVID.
No, no, COVID is basically.
That, that actually is a question for Commissioner Brand. Um, we, in the accounting department and our finance, we take the information that is given to us based on the events that they have. Um, that, so Commissioner Brand, would you like to answer that question, please?
Right, and just, there was a forty thousand dollars that was collected uh, the second half of this fiscal year and then one fifty-five and you're at the one ninety-five that you referred to.
But that one, that one fifty-five is for the entire year for us, for the summer.
Come on, I'm going to.
A month from here, twenty-three thousand dollars.
And the fees stayed the same, Roy, just because, uh, with the contract that we do have with the beach volleyball leagues, uh, it was a, a three-year contract. The first year that was supposed to take place was the year that the summer was shut down because of COVID. So what we did was we honored twenty-twenty a, as their first year. So we made the same. So you'll see the increase hopefully next year.
Okay.
Provided we have.
Well, we got the number of teams to get. All right, so we got something. All right, so I'll wait until I see these things and they're linked. Donna, like you said, you know, that way we can go over the actual cost too. Tommy, I hate to put you, your calendar, man.
No.
Did you put your, your, oh, there you are. You're behind me.
Behind me.
That's behind me, okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay.
Just, just to circle back for a second. Uh, I think it's an important point out. I'm going to circle back to a theme I brought up earlier about having to make some tough decisions to fix some old wrongs. And while what Councilman Les is talking about is all things that need to be looked at, the simple fact is if it costs a dollar to run the beach and you only take in seventy-five cents, that difference has to come from somewhere. Now, Councilman Les is talking about it, rightfully so, is looking at other monies that maybe you can reallocate that, that plug that hole. But then part of that problem you have to be careful of is if you move money from your right pocket to plug a hole in your left pocket, you just created a hole in your right pocket. So it's, it's a cumulative effect that you have to look at. Because, yeah, you can reallocate money from one budget line to plug the beach line, but then you may create a budget shortfall in the line you moved the money from. So you have to look at it holistically and look at it as a whole. You can't look at the, the beach park in, in isolation. And the simple fact is, the math is showing, now again, looking at creative ways maybe to reallocate funds. But generally speaking, the simple fact is we spend more to run the beach than we take in in beach revenue. That's an unpleasant fact of life and another one of those difficult things that we are faced with, that we have to address. That is the thing to think about. If you don't make that up in the beach fees, and remember, a lot of the beach fees are paid by non-residents that come here. If those non-residents don't help pay those beach fees, it's going into your taxes.
Our taxes.
Well, our taxes, that's true, because we pay them too. And, and we buy beach passes too. That money is coming either way, whether it's through beach fees or taxes. If you spend a dollar, you have to bring in a dollar. That's just basic accounting one-on-one. So you have to keep that in mind. It is to the advantage of the residents of the city to have the non-residents who utilize our beach paid for that service. They are utilizing our beach. So they should be contributing to the beach cleaning and all the other beach expenses, the lifeguards. That's what the beach fees do. So again, keep in mind, if it's not covered through the beach fees, it's going to eventually get covered through your taxes. So.
John, if you notice, I have not said a word about non-residents. I have no, I am only concerned, I was only elected by the residents of Long Beach. I'm concerned about them. Now, I do have a question though. We, the largest amount of tickets that we sell, the largest amount of, of, of non-resident daily's, we sell eighty-one thousand tickets, okay? But we don't raise their prices. Now, somebody, why don't we raise the non-residents?
We don't raise the non-resident prices because it's already so high that the fear is they will go to Rockaway or they will go to Nickerson or Jones Beach where you can pay by carload and get in much cheaper.
John, we, we charge our residents twelve dollars a day and we charge non-residents fifteen dollars a day. Do you think one dollar would make a difference?
If you, if, first of all, if you look at how many non, how many resident daily passes we sell, it's very few. Everybody buys.
Right.
The family pass, basically speaking. And so the concern is if you go over fifteen dollars, that's going to make us non-competitive with other nearby beaches. That people, you work for Jones Beach, you know, you can pay by carload and get in there and.
But you can park too.
And you can park too.
That's a big thing.
You know, and the other thing, and again, because I'm all about perspective, you know, the, the thing to keep in mind is even if this increase goes through, so even if it goes through, a family pass is a dollar forty-two a day. So for a family of four, that's thirty-five cents per person. I would challenge anyone in this room to tell me what you can do for thirty-five cents of entertainment for an entire day.
John, I'll go about that because I know that's your argument. You can do that with anything. You can take the nuclear submarine and take all the hundred thousand parts and break it down and say, well, if you're only, if you're paying for this part and it's only a few pennies a day, it's, that argument still, everything, every drop goes into a bucket, okay? So I mean, the idea that saying, well, it's only a couple of four years, only this, it's only that. John, it's money out of their pocket and.
It's money out of our pockets too. I buy beach passes, everybody up here buys beach passes. It's, it's out of all, but again.
But why not charge the non-residents more? Why not charge the family non-residents more?
There is a, there is, there was a court ruling.
Where, where, I looked for that. I did not find it. And, and John, the fact is, at, at County Pen State charges five times the amount.
You, I think you and I have similar views on this one. There is a court ruling the city has used for decades. It's an old ruling that basically was interpreted to mean non-residents can't pay more than double what a resident pays. I looked at that case. I didn't interpret it that way, but that's the interpretation the city has been using for, for years.
Is that your interpretation?
The case is kind of, basically in a reasonable scenario, it's shocking to the conscience.
Yes.
It said reasonable, a reasonable.
But somehow County Pen State manages to do five times the amount.
Doesn't think that they're doing it correctly.
But they didn't.
I think, you know, clearly we have work here to do. I would like to hear from the public.
Thank you. If I could add one more thing to what John said that a clean will not be increasing the prices on the beach passes, a million dollars increase in the property taxes would be approximately ninety dollars per residence. So that there will be impact on residents one way or the other. If a million dollars is not going to come from here, it will have to come from somewhere else. And that would be ninety dollars per residence.
I, I understand that, but you're telling me, and I have said this before, with a five-point-three million dollar budget, is that what it is? You can't find one penny to cut. Not one penny. I've not seen one penny cut yet.
So, um.
But it's like Donna said, you're going to have to look into that.
So the eighty-one thousand tickets that are, um, non-resident daily, that's sixty-three point six percent of the total number of tickets sold of a hundred twenty-eight thousand. Those, that sixty percent actually brings in thirty percent of the total revenue from last summer. So sixty percent of the actual ticket sales, but only thirty percent of the revenue.
I don't think it brings in that much. Eighty-one thousand of four million?
Eighty-one thousand tickets out of the total one hundred and twenty-eight thousand tickets. Of the, of the resident family passes, it's twenty-two thousand tickets sold out of a hundred twenty-eight thousand. Those seventeen point five percent of, of that revenue, of the total revenue is two point, is two million. So those tickets bring in fifty percent of the beach revenue we collected last summer. So for me, as a, as a finance, as a chief financial officer and a fiduciary, creative accounting, uh, our, using our controller to figure out creative accounting just doesn't really apply for me. So, you know, I'm looking forward to your analysis and then the auditor's opinion of directed and direct costs for the beach overall. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public. Mr. Quack?
Steve?
Yes, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Almost afraid to speak after all that. Um, okay.
It's nice to meet you, Kathy.
Yes, okay.
It's better than not to meet.
Um. Kathy, no, you're in Long Beach. Um, maybe I'm missing something, but I thought that the non-resident families were going to get raised to this claim, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay. What I see missing here is what we were just speaking about, which is the, uh, non-resident daily tickets. And it's not fair to compare, um, a city beach with the state park. I gave you all analysis between, uh, town beach, uh, single-use fees, which were twenty to thirty dollars, both in this strip of land and Suffolk County. So, um, in my view, and I've had this group for decades, we have a beautiful thing here and we don't know how to sell it, okay? We have a beautiful beach. We had it put on the map by Sandy, first in a bad way, but then in a good way. So, um, people want to come here. And I appreciated when I became senior, um, not paying the higher price. I could afford the increase last year and I can afford it this year. Not all seniors and not all families will be able to do that. Um, but if you go to the beach ten times in a year, it comes down to three dollars a visit and you could stay as long as you want, basically. So, um, I, I don't know how to explain it. Like, it was a song, it's in the way that you use it. I don't know if we're using it right. You know, we're not using the beauty that we have here and marketing it. And I think the beach park, I know it's going to come out of our taxes if we don't have it paid for itself. So, um, I think we should raise, um, the non-resident family, um, the non-resident single tickets and also the non-resident single tickets in conjunction with the railroad, with the MTA. That's a, you know, if you ever seen a train coming, you can even drive down the street. You've got like fifty people to a hundred coming off each train. So I think, yeah, I see both sides of the argument, but to me, it's, it's better to raise the fees than to put more taxes on the already twenty-five percent tax raise that we have. And just one other thing, in terms of some of these boardwalk vendors getting a break on the prices, um, when we decided to start charging people for events in the city, each one of them, I was there for something else, each one of them pleaded their case with the city council to get the fee reduced. So if, you know, that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Sorry to point it.
Hello, Jay Bragg, Long Beach. Uh, I want to present, I want to ask some questions about the, the bigger picture. And I believe that is something that no one is talking about here. You have a combination of three things impacting our, our city and the summer. You have the, the lanes that were reduced from three to two on the southbound side of Austin Boulevard, which Long Beach didn't really have any saving or didn't fight to have that eliminated. So now in the summer, you're going to have reduced a much more traffic coming into the, to the town, excuse me, much more congestion coming into the city. Add that to the fees. Add that to what you're having spoken about tonight, which is the new parking fees you want to put in to pay off the anger problem. Now, I don't know if other people know this, but obviously you do. You're looking, you're looking to generate fees of approximately sixty, anywhere from sixty-one to sixty-four million dollars over ten years with major parking increases. You want meters in the Mid-Central Business District uh, from Lafayette back to Monroe and a block, Martha blocks down. a block martha blocks out of parking, where there'll be parking meters for the major amount of revenue. You're asking four dollars an hour.
Sir?
So...
May I interrupt? This is about the beach revenue.
So let's talk about it. So you have all these fees, before the people ever get to the beach, you've got people driving in with problems this summer. You're now going to have larger fees, which is necessary, which I understand, and parking fees. Now I see true parking in Long Beach out of the market where people are going to go to Long Beach. If you're going to look to institute this summer parking fees of what you're looking for at four, where people have to pay four dollars an hour. I know you have, I know I'm presenting the big picture. Now, you may not see that big picture, but a lot of people that I've spoken to do see that big picture, and that's why I came tonight, a little bit here before. But I came to share that with you, that though it seems to be looking at a large, a large problem nicely, why would people come to Long Beach to pay energy fees plus parking fees? You have to ask yourself, if people who pay parking fees till eleven P.M. at night to eat at the restaurants, if people want to go to the beach, and they want to hang out, and they want to go to restaurants, where are they going to go? Where are they going to park? They're going to be paying all that extra money, maybe they'll go somewhere else? So these are things I believe that the town must look at. It seems logical to me, it seems logical to a lot of people that I spoke with, and I said, I'll come to speak for them. So I received thirty or forty people in Long Beach. So there you are. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. So you watched us, yeah, you watched us.
Yes, yes. Mr. Matt?
No, it's fine. I'll try to make this quick, it's already approaching Scorsese, if you'd like.
Speak into the microphone.
Yep. So if by the council's one admission, earlier on, when we were talking about Heywood, then you said we're going to be mortgaging our kids' future for them to build property for them for a while there. Have we considered leveraging zoning negotiations at all to sort of finalize the beach? I'm not exactly sure what's legally possible, but I feel like if they're going to be changing the landscape of this town, the mission contributed to making the beach a complete city.
Can you speak into this?
Oh, sorry, I can carry that around.
Keep letting me talk.
Oh. I can repeat what I just said, boss.
I can try to address a rule. And so you were saying, why can't zoning changes come with the caveat that those who develop contribute? That's exactly what's going to be in the zoning legislation that you need to have this policy. So developers who come in to build, right, where they'll be on the ocean floor elsewhere, right now it's just on the ocean front in that Residence Business A District, wants to be on the bill, the zoning legislation, developers will have to basically contribute to the community in order to be eligible for those benefits. So be restricted unless you give something to the city, be it cash money, give park land, you know, different concepts that give back to the community. So it's a good point, and that's what we're trying to address with the legislation.
Yeah, I mean, it feels like they should be paying for residents, but we shall not be aware of us to finance to watch the condos. And then there's another untapped source of revenue in legalized cannabis. If we were to opt into that, it just wouldn't be an argument to have at all, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Judy?
Speaking about beach passes. That was exactly my intent, okay?
I'm just trying to remind myself.
Okay, it's slightly naive, but I've thought about it, but using your tenures to put that, more than two or three councils, so no reason at all. But we sell more than one-tenth resident in the past for a bit, and we sub to three now in bread.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So I think we all know that a lot of those resident beach passes fill with residents. They go to friends and family who don't live in Long Beach. Can we not structure this so that, I get that every family is not kids and adults, but can we not structure it so that there is only one resident family pass sold per family, and then paray the extra four kids, the extra grandowners there, whatever, but within that one family resident, rather than selling three sets of four, which can go to the non-residents that couldn't pay a lot more?
Is anybody game to take that?
Go for it, sir.
Okay. Andy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayhem?
Okay.
Good evening, Joseph A. M., Southridge Road. I really appreciate you talking about this topic, and I wanted to mention that in County Hempstead, I know that they have a take-on, take-off policy when it comes to sanitation. So we're looking at the budget for the Ocean Beach, and I'm here to actually audit our service of sanitation here. It's not very good, and I don't think that we get, I, look, morning sanitation crews go out, they do the beach, and it looks impeccable, but by the time it's sundown, you see all the garbage stacked up, if it's even lucky enough to be brought in. And I'm thinking, and important issues too, that was important, like revenues coming from rent placing on the boardwalk and using that to address repairs on the boardwalk. And I know that sanitation is a little hairy because there's budgeting going towards the sanitation crews that only go on the beach, and there's budgeting that only goes to sanitation crews that do the boardwalk, garbage cans on the boardwalk. So maybe if we could work this stuff, this little stuff out, we could work on making the beach cleaner and making it more economical and efficient, our sanitation program, and I also think that we should be increasing rent for like the brick ties and the school and all of those places that are just like...
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayhem, sorry. You said a take-on, take-off policy? Just my initial, what would that look like? What are you going to do?
So if you go down to Lido Beach, it's basically, when you're on the beach, there aren't any garbage cans. When you go on the beach, you take off the beach.
Yep.
Like an animal.
Proud of that, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Jackson?
Hello, Mr. Jackson?
Peter, hi.
Hi. If I recall, we're talking about a one-million-dollar shortfall, I'm expecting. Okay. So my problem with things like raising fees for things that are public is that it essentially is a tax. You know, people don't like to hear that their taxes might go up, but really, it's just a tax that affects people who have less money. It's like a flat tax base. It's just, you know, making them pay, you know, something that's a higher percentage of what they have than somebody who might have a higher property value. So, and I also worry that doubling the cost of out-of-towners getting here is going to affect local businesses. I mean, ideally, it's a shame that the city has to work like a business, because ideally, the beach would be free, and the local businesses would get all the benefits of that. And I think that would be the safe assumption, too. So anyway, we're coming off a pandemic. It's a million-dollar shortfall. I understand that sounds like a lot of money, but it seems a little premature to raise the prices the very next year, especially, and this is not going to be a popular opinion, we pay our police between three to, excuse me, thirteen and fourteen million dollars a year, and probably that night. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Deloree?
Mike Deloree, Long Beach. I want to thank you, Councilman Vendo, for bringing up that link fee, our four-odd. That will save lives. Because, and Councilman, last year, being a lifeguard, we use, most drownings occur in Long Beach when the lifeguards are off duty. All. All, okay? So giving people the ability, they really can't afford a pass, or they come down and fight for a way to half hour just to go to a beach, is beneficial. How do you manage that and implement it? It's, can be figured out. I think, and I want to thank all of you collectively, it's not an easy job that you have. I'm sure the city manager, Gabe, came here, and the patrol in Resnick, there were budget issues that needed to be looked at, but you can't do that every year in a city this size. So in closing, I want to thank Maria and Brian, who I'm sacked, who are with councilmembers here going through the same negotiation settlement, and there were a lot of hours spent. So just the general public knows this is not something that just came lightly. And I just want to thank all of you tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, yes.
Hi, Anne Floman-Hatt, Long Beach. I just wanted to say that I am against raising the prices of beach passes for this year. I think ultimately, the beach should be free, and it's, you know, a resource you can safeguard or, you know, gatekeep land, open land, and I think that there's also a lot of inflation that's happened that's really affected working families in the past year, and the outlets such as the beach should be, you know, not have to be compromised because of tight budgets and also inflation. And I think this beach council should consider doing alternative sources of revenue, such as opting in to retail dispensaries for Canada sales. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gussler?
Good evening, Jay Gussler, Long Beach. I really have a problem, of course, I mean, it goes up every year, it's just, you know, the way it is, and as Councilman Vendo pointed out, it's, you know, very down like a daily court, it's still a bargain. The problem that I have, again, and also pick up on what Councilman Vendo said, one way or another, we're preparing to use a fee directly to use to find beach paths, or the shortfall for the beach is, I don't understand, so it's going to have to be no matter what. The problem I do have as a sat designer tonight is that it seems like we still are sloppy with our budget. When Ms. Gading was hired, she was representing to the public to be a, lack of better term, a financial person, and yet, as given that council member, less of his concerns highlight that the quality of our budgeting practices have not improved under Ms. Gading's watch. I don't understand why we can't budget more accurately, and I'm accustomed to decades of shell games by prior administration, where it's totally impossible to get a handle on the cost of any given city service, beach, at least any given city service, because the cost is so parcelled out and spread out throughout the budget that it makes it unduly difficult to really get a handle on what those costs are. I just think there would be more honesty and clarity in our budgeting practices. And again, just to pick up on what Councilman Vendo said, yeah, it's a left pocket, right pocket, it's all the same amount of money. But I can tell you this, I know what's in my left pocket, and what's in my right pocket, and what's in my other pocket, and what's in my heart pockets. That's a budget. It's not enough to say, this is what it's going to cost. We, the people footing the bill, should be able to discern what that cost is by looking at a document, and not having to fish around in various different lines in order to get an idea of what the true cost is.
Thank you, Mr. Gussler, for your statement. And since you brought my name into it, when I came to this city and they brought me in for budgeting, budgeting has improved, when I came to this city, your general fund balance was two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand dollars. Your overall fund balance for the city was a negative nine, was a negative six-point-nine. This new audit coming out, I'm sorry.
Billy.
Six-point-nine million, two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, thank you, six-point-nine million. This new audit that's coming out shows that the fund balance in the general fund, which was two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, in fact, now is a little over six million. The overall fund balance for the entire city is thirty-six million. Most of that money cannot be used for the beach because it is for capital projects and things like that. The budgeting that was done prior to me coming was called, what's the state called this, aggressive budget. When I came, I made it more conservative budget. You are absolutely correct to feel however you feel. However, how I feel is that since I've been here, the team that I have, I've been doing everything they can do to turn the finances around and move in a positive direction. Our audits show that, the state shows that. Well, before I came, the budgets that were here, the finances that was here, showed that Long Beach was number one most fiscally stressed city in this entire state of New York. It means you are more fiscally stressed than the city of New York. Now that I've been here for two years, you're one-tenth of the way from not being on the list at all. So you're entitled to your opinion, I'm entitled to mine, other residents are entitled to their opinion, but the truth lies where it lies. So I want to thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
Mr. Gussler, I respectfully disagree with your comment about the budgeting for the, that's been done by the city staff, and I think it's an affront to this staff. I think that it's not perfect, but it's come a long way, and it should be recognized. And I think that this council needs to remember it's a legislative body, and be sustained with legislating, and leave the day-to-day operations to the staff, and work in collaboration with them.
I think the life officials should take more of a direct approach to overseeing the operations, certainly, but they're afraid of this ground.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gussler. Any other comments from the public on this side? Okay, I have to close the hearing.
I want to write your calendar.
I have three.
Hold on, I have one. I want to, once the COVID forces to see what you're...
Wait, wait a second. Are we up here?
We would tell this meeting will not be closed. I have emails, it would stay open, so at the next meeting, which is not in the middle of a vacation period, people could also come to be common.
Get to the city, please. I want you to ask the committee to table this item. To table, I believe you're making that, I believe you're going to motion to table this item, that's why I was... So just that, I told you, I want to... I have one as a record, that's when Vendo forces the city, you go out and motion beach call. I believe your motion for the side.
Wait, what? Did you just say that?
Yeah.
I can't hear you.
So it is, we're going to motion table this.
Yes.
So we also vote on it tonight. Right. So I would like to motion to table this resolution.
Do we have a second? Second.
Go ahead and take, I have number one. Pastor LaCalle.
Yes.
Councilor Reston.
Yes.
Councilman Vendo.
Yes.
Vice President Tresson.
Yes.
President Pignus.
Yes.
Okay. I have to take the resolution, authorizing the city manager to enter to a settlement between City of Long Beach Commission of Buildings and Property Conservation Scott Gardens and the City of Long Beach Zone Board of Appeals for a human and Del Air Building, LLC.
This is part of the city manager's report. Do we have any questions from the public on this side? Okay.
I agree as a resolution authorizing the city manager, that option of the city corporation council to enter into a stipulation or settlement between the City of Long Beach, County Sess of Raymond Driver, and Vicissipity Building, LLC. Good evening, all, Rich Perry. So as you saw in the city council, the city manager's report earlier, we expect there is some of the Hamburgh litigation, this is a related litigation to some degree, right? A condition of the final settlement, the Hamburgh, requires that be settled, this matters well.
So basically, this is a hybrid proceeding against the City of Long Beach, which was proposed two years ago. It's been managed, there's been lots of motions that have been forward about this. Because it's a condition of settlement to handle the behavior of the matter, we discussed it with the local council and reached a stipulation or settlement where they're going to draw with prejudice and we move on.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
No. Just want to just let on one thing, Rich Powers, this was not in the light of the intent, correct?
That's correct.
Any questions from the public? Yes. Denise. I called you legislator for it last night, so...
Denise, for Long Beach. Regarding the settlement, I just have with the opportunity where the state is allowing the city to borrow a telebond that would last 30 years rather than a normal 15 years. What would be the benefit to that? I mean, I could create this to if I was going to buy a house. I mean, if I didn't, I know the city has financial difficulties, but if you buy a house and you pay mortgage 30 years, the house could be $100,000. Based on the interest rate you end up paying with the interest that you pay, the house may eventually cost you over 30 years, say $230,000, you know? But if you bought the house with a 15-year mortgage, you may be paying a higher mortgage, but overall, 15 years, it would only cost you the $100,000, I'm saying it was just $75,000. So my concern is that we talked about that for 30 years who've had this hanging over their head. And I don't know whether or not it's absolutely prudent to immediately go after a 30-year bond because I, the overall cost, you know, there's some of us here that are going to be $101,000 by the time this bond is, you know? And I might still be a lot, who knows? But I'm also thinking about the children, you know, the cost, everything that, the babies that are in need of money are going to have to pay. So I was...
Brian, Brian, do you want to speak on this, please? Brian? Brian, you have... And Denise, there's just one thing to keep in mind. All this does is give us the option to potentially vote it there. Doesn't mean we're going to do it. They have, we have to do the financial analysis and see what makes the most sense in the past case. All this is doing is giving the option to do it. Otherwise, had that legislation not passed, the option wouldn't even been available.
Right, I wasn't, I was just asking why you could do that, but...
Right, we don't, we don't know if it's going to happen yet. The financial analysis has to be done to see, are you better off ripping off the band-aid in 15 years or looking at? Because you're right, that you pay more in interest over 30 years, but to your mortgage analogy, analysis, it's sort of like saying, can I afford $3,000 a month or $4,500 a month?
The council has actually been reviewed this preliminarily and it approved it to explore the 30-year option. And that's why Brian from item three, if you could please come up and to review all of, because you've done the work on this.
Yep.
I think so. Thank you.
That's correct. And I think, for the most, I've explained it as we'd expect. It is the whole idea of just what we can afford over the next couple of years. Is it, it would be more expensive with the interest over 30 years, of course, but it does lower the kind of monthly or yearly impact. So it simply just gives us the optionality as we look forward in the future.
Thank you.
Denise, one of the things I have been advising my clients, if they're looking for longer mortgages, it's a good idea right now because we're about to enter into a pretty heavy inflationary period. And money, if you get a fixed rate mortgage right now, remember you can always pay it off early. And I assume with the bond, you can...
Yes, that's right. I don't think you can pay off.
No.
But you can renegotiate the bond. When you get that, it's something that depends on the negotiation of the bond. Some bonds you can pay off, some you can't.
So, you know, but the point is that I think we're going to be quite surprised what interest rates are going to be like next year. So in that particular case, we...
One small clarification. I did say it wasn't the LOI, Councilman Leston, but just to be fair, they weren't pressing this during discussion. Discussion started, it just was not in the... Yeah. A little bit.
So we're back to any other questions about item? Item? Item three. No more question?
Item four, resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a new ambulance for the city's fire department under a sourceless contract.
Commissioner Miller.
Good evening. At this time, Long Beach Blackwater is in need of replacing its primary ambulance, which is manned by a career force. As this office has discussed with the city council before, our primary ambulance is in constant use and this constant use puts an extreme amount of wear and tear on the engine. The specific ambulance is utilized for approximately 3,000 emergency medical home each year in addition to all fire emergency responsive. The ambulance committee consisting of career volunteer members determined that a 2021 PL Custom Classic 4x4 Custom Classic type ambulance at total cost of $329,929 would best serve the City of Long Beach and its residents and request the city council to purchase such. Money for the purchase is available on our budget account for equipment leases. Coming with this ambulance also would be a power load stretcher, which would hopefully reduce injuries occurring from lifting stretchers.
Are there questions?
Just a couple of questions.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. Did you, were you able to finish your answer? Okay. Other questions from the council?
I just have a couple of questions. We have four ambulances now?
Correct. Currently, we have four ones out of service. We have three, two ALS and one BLS.
Okay, and this is an ALS.
This will be ALS.
Right. And the one that's out of service, we're putting the new engine in that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this ambulance is going to replace one of the three that are in service right now.
Correct.
Correct. And can leave, is there any way that we can repair that one too, so we have an extra?
Well, it currently working. It's just, it's a 2003 model. We can use it as a backup as long as we can possibly can.
Okay, so it's working right now.
Yes.
Because what you did with the engine, you know, the new engine with the three-year guarantee, I forget what three-year guarantee, I think it was, which seems to be a cool thing for these. Now, on that particular one, I understand there were several bids?
There was like three bids.
Can we possibly see them? We didn't even know that there were other bids.
I was, you should be able to.
Okay. All right. And we still went with the original people?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So we got the engine?
Yes, the engine.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public?
Item 12, resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase various chemicals. On a as-needy basis with a water purification plant, you know, we'll just talk to the bidders.
Good evening, Attorney General Joseph Posner, Commissioner of Public Works. Good evening. There were two budgets received in the office of purchasing on Thursday, March 30, first 2022, 11:00 AM, for the purchase of aluminum sulfate liquid and hydro lime ball for the water purification plant. The low bidder on aluminum sulfate liquid was Kent trade chemicals at $1.30 per gallon. The estimated annual usage is $40,000, therefore the annual cost is approximately $66,240. The previous unit price was $1.30 per gallon, so it was approximately 30 cents of increase. And aluminum sulfate is basically utilized for settling out iron in the open air containment basins at the water plant's pouring treatment process. The low bidder on hydrated lime ball was Raymond at $210,88 per tonne. Estimated annual usage is 100 tonnes, so the cost of the city's price was $21,880 annually. The previous price was $208 per tonne. It's on the same level. Hydrated limes used in the treatment process basically to raise the pH of water. Funds is available in their contracted services line in the budget. If you have any questions, let me have the answer.
Any questions from the council on this item? See no question? Any questions from the public?
Item 16, resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase sodium hyperfluoride from the lowest responsible bidder.
That's mine as well. There were five bids received in purchasing on Thursday, March 30, first 2022, 11:00 AM. Purchase of sodium hyperfluoride at the water pollution control plant. The low bidder was twin cannon swimming pool maintenance and supply company at $1.29 per gallon. The bid was based on utilizing 70,000 gallons per year, which equates to $90,300 annually. The current vendor is J.C.I. Jones. Their unit price is $0.95 a gallon. Funds is available in the water pollution control contracted services, which are on this item. Sodium hyperfluoride is essentially used in this treatment process at the water pollution control. If you have any questions, I can have the answer as well.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public on this item? Okay?
Item 17, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for Masonry work at various locations around the City of Long Beach on as-needy basis for the lowest responsible bidder.
On April 7, 2022, four bids were received in public works on the city's Masonry work at various location project. The low bidder was Castle Industries at $201,500. There were three other bidders. One was Soss Industries at $289,700. The second, the third was HTC Landscaping at $547,600. And the fourth was Capital Projects Inc. at $655,500. This contract is basically utilized to perform Masonry work at various locations on public streets. For example, we just did a little quick work on National Boulevard South, Elder Park, on the eastern west side, utilizing this contract. There were used a few areas, Masonry work, curbs, sidewalks, around the city. They're a relevant contract. We currently hold this contract for a work of up to many years and funds available on the operating budget 2023 this year. So any questions?
Ms. Leston?
Yes. Joe, this, last year, we settled a lawsuit for little bumps on a sidewalk ramp. Do you remember that? They put the bumps out for blind people to be able to tell.
They're called truncated dome inserts?
Right. And, you know, somebody informed a few years ago, they sued, we settled, then somebody else fell, same spot, they sued, and, you know, we had to settle. Would these, would this company be doing those?
If it's a handicap ramp on a public street? Yes. And they don't use those, the ones that you're referring to are, they're like one-by-one tiles that we used to use in the DOT recommended probably like 10 years ago. They really don't work well. They actually tend to shatter when it freezes, cogs over them or something like that. We don't use that style, the link you're referring to. Now they use more of a mat that they actually set inside the concrete. So it's the one you're referring to, I don't think we use those anymore.
I don't remember. I know is that it happened twice.
It's probably that type which we normally utilize.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public on this item?
Item 18, resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase interoperable video management integrated surveillance system in New York City Public and General Services Council.
Excuse me, legislator four?
Please sign.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Now, we dealt with the last item, but it's for publication only. Big last item.
I put it, I put this one...
I thought I might have put this.
Sorry. Commissioner Wallace?
So this item is for our Close Circuit Television Network. It patiently brings together already approved projects and already funded projects for what's remainder of the rec center, what is some monies that have been allocated out of the Ocean Beach Park budget for, from their, the money that was gifted to the city, as well as capital project for Close Circuit Television. It's going to take all of our Close Circuit Television feeds, kind of bring them all together so that they can all be viewed in one centralized location. Right now, we have multiple locations in multiple areas where these are, these are up, some of them are not monitored at all. We have locations in City Hall, we have locations in the police department, we have locations at the railroad. So everything's going to be brought together into one. It's also going to be modernized in all of the cameras, the servers, and the communications back to the centralized location, which would be at the central rooms. The current method that we're doing uses microwave antenna technology so that it's much less expensive than having to run cable or fiber optic cable or any sort of CAT 6, CAT 5, which have distance limitations to it. The total cost for this portion of the project is $232,842.70. There are additional courses of this project which are not funded right now, which will come at a later date, which will be to modernize all of the cameras and the ability to view the cameras in all of the railroad facility, as well as access controls to, to sort of do in the city hall complex, as well as the road report.
I know with the council, I had a lot of questions last week on this item, and that you've answered. Thank you. From my state, could you please remind me of the length of this phase of the project? When will this work be completed, start of implementation?
So it's tough to say when the work is going to be completed because there are a lot of supply chain problems right now. As soon as this PO, as soon as we are able to get this approved, we'll be cutting POs to get the items ordered. The vendor that we chose is a vendor of Persic. They're also the vendor that Nissau County uses as well. They have many, many decades of servicing public entities. So, and I have a relationship with them when I was in the county. Very glad that we're able to get the most state bid. So this phase probably won't be fully completed for the better part of the year, not a little longer than that, which won't mean we'll solve the other phases because things can move along in a coordinated fashion as opposed to one after the other, after the other.
Any questions from the council?
Commissioner? So I just want to confirm that should the need arise in an emergency situation where we activate the emergency operations center, all those feeds can also be picked up in the emergency operations center?
So everything that I'm trying to do now is put everything on cloud-based where we're actively at, I should be able to see them on my phone. And all of the detective numbers should be put on their phones so they can see it, as well as to play back and securing the video as well. So yes, we haven't seen it yet. I wanted to, I could log in, put the application on the city manager's desktop, and we can do it from our office as well.
Then, does this include, assuming there's some training that will be necessary for some of the operators, does this some of the operators, does this include that, or is that?
So everything that we purchased from this particular vendor, Persic, probably going to be what's called Milestone, which is the software we'll probably use for our feeds and for our management of our video. So they will train us on that, you know, as included. And the only people who would really need the training are the people in the police department that will be involved in playing back, securing the video, and things like that. We'll also try and integrate this into our discovering process for ourselves and stuff like that, so that the people downstairs in our records department will also be trained on how to block it and retrieve it as well.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Walsh? I noticed that money is being checked in for this is found in the rec center line, the lifeguard line and stuff like that. How would this go? Would these actually be helping lifeguards to, to inform the boardwalk?
So the money that you see actually for the rec center, that money is allocated and ready for a project of this type in the rec center, we're charging it to our, this one global project that we have, one manager, which is coming out of the police department. The lifeguard monies came out of the lifeguard line that's, I actually have to take $60,000 of police department capital project money to supplement the lifeguards in order to get beach cameras up so that they'll be able to view on the beach side, the conditions on the beach, conditions in the water, the size of the ground. The lifeguards are looking for that in their location. So they'll be able to view that there as well. But the cost of that project is expensive. Just to give you a quick reason why, you can't run wires there, because you did it at quadruple the price of this item. So we're doing what's called sick loops. They're microwave transmitters and receivers that push the video feed around. We're actually having to get a seat permission to get on the roof of some of the larger complexes down there so we can fire a beam of data back to headquarters here and view it. So that $50,000 is less than half the money that the beach needed just to get the cameras on the.
I'm just curious on how it would actually operate. Would it, would the lifeguards, for example, have the ability to watch the water?
Yeah, we're going to give them the ability to view and play back from lifeguard vehicles, yes.
On all the beaches or only?
Wherever their cameras are. So are these going to be permissions-based, so the lifeguards will be able to see lifeguard cameras, the police department will be able to see everything, city hall, if they wanted to see the city hall stairwells, we're able to see city hall stairwells. So are they going to be permissions-based based on the Milestone application?
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any questions from the public on this item? Mr. Epstein?
Respectfully, how will this help the people of Long Beach? How will having cameras in the boardwalk in the police station here?
Well, when a crime is committed and nobody's there to see it, the cameras will pick it up and we'll be able to identify people who commit crime and arrest them. That's one way we will do this.
After the fact, I'm sorry, how much violent crime do we have here in Long Beach? Relatively pretty safe, right? This is a quarter of the budget of the short hole we're talking about, the beach revenue.
I would say that one violent crime is one violent crime in two minutes. So I would not say that any of, any crimes of acceptable level to make. I think that's a misnomer saying that there's no violent crime in the city. There's violent crimes in the city that happen all too frequently. We had our first murder in four years this year that we're working diligently to actually solve. And one of the solutions that we're putting in place at that location is the installation of additional twelve cameras so we can monitor the location and make sure that nothing bad is happening there as well. So this is a technology that we use across the state, across the county, and I know you welcome it, and I encourage you to get a larger and larger platform of cameras.
Okay. And I understand we had a first murder in four years. I would say that still keeps us relatively safe. I just think that these kinds of budget issues should be scrutinized to the same degree that we scrutinize a lot of the social services in this town. We'll attend to $20,000, you know, not to catch me, or, I don't think we should, you know, just accept a $283,000 surveillance system without asking questions.
Mr. Gates?
I want to address that, if you're speaking about the $10,000 or $20,000 we just throw around, those were grant funds. Those not profit organizations applied with the city to receive those monies. That was not monies that came out of the city budget. Those were grant funds by CDBG, and CDBG gets their money from HUD.
The other thing I'd like to say, the city manager gave me, is that right now we have a proliferation of something as simple as graffiti in this town. Very, very, very difficult to catch graffiti artists, causing $50,000 in damage just to public property alone. These cameras have been helpless. They're up on the boardwalk, they're going to be on the railroad station. They're going to be in places where police officers and it would be much less effective and efficient for us to put a police officer in every corner, in every stairwell of the railroad. There's a, there's a concept in SEPTED which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And one of the things that they say is, well, you create the opportunity not only for natural surveillance, but can actually show the public that they are being surveilled. People who have the idea of committing a crime will be deterred from that. So as opposed to any idea of surveilling, this is to deter people because they're going to know, you aren't going to be so repetitious cameras. These cameras are going to be in plain view, you're going to know that you're going to be surveilled, or you have to look up.
Mr. Epstein, do you have any other, more questions?
I had a response to Ms. Gates, sorry. If you don't mind, it's going to be very quick. I understand that those are money. My point wasn't that it's too much, my point was that it's not enough. I mean, if money, if the amounts of money that we're talking about for surveillance to be put into programs that help people, that also might prevent crime. And it might be a less totalitarian sounding way of doing it. I mean, no offense, I feel bad for the person who was murdered, but I don't think one murder in four years warrants having a camera in every stairwell in the Royal Road.
Cameras are already in those stairwells, just off the grid.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Epstein.
Commissioner Walsh, I'm sorry, one question. You were talking about microwave, but we, you know, rather than the cable, we're going to find 10,000 feet of cable. What is that cable for?
Not in this project. Oh, that cable, oh, yes. So that cable is for the wiring in places where there are hard-wired cameras. So the cameras have to report back to a centralized location so that they can actually get their signal gathered, if you will, that's called serve. And from there, it's going to be beamed back to headquarters. The greatest expense would be on the boardwalk. You're going to beam from camera to camera to camera, and then back to headquarters. We don't have to do any of that. The cost of cable in that, I asked for just old parks, how much was the cost of all that cable? He said if you can get permissions from all the utilities to view their poles and everything else, you're looking at about $5,000 and $5,000 just for cable. So these, these microwave antennas are very efficient.
It's a great idea, I just was wondering what the team does in CAT 6.
Yeah, that's all internal wiring for hard-wired cameras that are already, for the most part, have the wires there, the reformer wires put into the cable. One thing I would like to just leave the city council with, while I appreciate what Mr. Epstein was saying, I don't think we do want the exclusion of the other. I'm all for social services and for, and for giving people the opportunity to prevent crime, prevent crime from happening from the beginning, but not the exclusion of another program that also is.
Thank you. Mr. Met, did you have a question? I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Kyle?
Thank you, yeah, Kyle, he's on the story. No, I got it right now, too, I think, by the way, they were missing, yeah, I think. So full disclosure, I work in cybersecurity, kind of. I used to manage security teams, breaking systems like TES all the time. So I guess I'm wondering first off, like, how we got into the security measures that we're going to be taking for the average, I don't want to say beat cop, but, you know, for lack of a better term, right? As to how they're going to get into the system, what they're going to be watching about, I want to make sure that they're not going to be.
So the average? The average beat cop will not be accessed. This is restricted to our desk officers, meeting our supervisors, and the access to any of the video would be by permissions-based only. So it would be the executive team or our detectives investigating the problem. And I use my cops to sit in this.
Cool. And is there going to be a wire for that? Would I be able to tell if, let's say, somebody was misusing the systems outside of the law? This kind of happens quite frequently.
I don't see how anybody would be able to access it, but all of them would have the insurance. People who are, anybody who logs into the system, it's recorded, we record it, and that's one of the features of Moss. So for an example, we use Milestone in Nessel County Police Department when I was there. And the female cells have cameras on them. And supervisors will allow them to, the female cells, protection is required by the state department of corrections. But every time you look at a female cell, somebody is notified they've been looking at the female cell. So those types of protections. Not necessarily going to find that fund, because we don't do it before.
So is it vulnerable by the public? Like, if I want to put a foil for this information, like, how is this, or a website I can go to to see that? This type of stuff is a kind of.
So that would be considered public safety exception. You wouldn't be able to see when we're accessing or not accessing because they would give you an idea of what our investigation is going to be. So that's what we public safety.
Orderly, like yearly, and what the, like, how do I, how do we know? Sorry, I guess I'm wondering how would we know the systems are being abused if we're not making some next public?
So that would be something that at the time, if it was for the locals, the team would evaluate whether or not we would be able to get access to that. And the determination would be that, speaking of that, is going to be too difficult for the answer on a specific basis. Whether there was a foil request made for a particular, here's an example, a defense attorney, if somebody gets arrested and there's video of that person entering the station house, uh, station house in processing and then going into the cell, all of that gets turned over. They don't even have to ask, we just get it right away. You know, so there are a lot of checks and balances and these types of things. So any other camera that's down there, is that camera in the public space? And there's no right or expectation of privacy, walking down the boardwalk can be in the public space. If it can be viewed by the public, you can put a camera. Okay?
Yeah, final thing, I guess the point is really, unless there is a reason to investigate this, there's no plan right now to, like, pure act the office information.
I don't know what you mean by audit. Like, audit what it would be. I'm not quite sure what you mean by audit, but the, the cameras in the public space, we've all, you know, like during the summer months, we turn on the cameras, we're watching the cameras on the boardwalk, at nighttime, we're watching the cameras on the boardwalk. We've actually watched the cameras on the boardwalk, saw a man walking last year down the boardwalk, and get jumped, and we dispatch all police officers the way we're going to arrest people, because we actually are, we're looking at the cameras at the time. So that's the type of stuff we do. Now, that's not considered private information or information that you're not allowed to get. So if you wanted to go outside of your house and you wanted to put cameras up and record all around your house, and everything visible from a public space or your private property out into the public space, you could do that. As a matter of fact, if it's visible on someone's private property and you were standing in your house, you put a camera on, or video, video on someone's private house, you could do that too. So what it's out, not only involving people, it's not considered private. All public cameras, none of them are bathrooms or locker rooms or any place where there's an extracurricular device.
Thank you, thank you, Kev. Mr. Naehan?
Joe Naehan, Long Beach. Are the microwave antennas that are going to be installed, if not using hard wire, do you know what the XR is? And the repeating is, is down.
So it would be equivalent to the same thing as a firewall, just radio. It's a type of radio, that's a microwave also. Microwave is just basically, it's a, it's a frequency of light. People think of it as a microwave in a house. It's not really the same as a microwave in your house. That's 2,000 watts. It's only about one watt to watch, just in your office, it's different hour, and when you go to your office. It's a, it's a radio frequency that is the same, it's actually less power than we use on our handheld radios, or than we use all over the city. You can go out and buy a handheld radio with more wattage than a regular. It's just focused so that it's one point, it's point-to-point, so there's no radiation that comes off of it in any other direction. It's literally like a laser beam. It's actually in the spectrum of light, so that laser beam goes from one point to the next. And if you held up a piece of paper, you could block it, which is why it has to be controlled. Oh, a cell phone, if you hold a cell phone, you have to hold it for 40 hours, like, you know, dangerousness.
Are there any other questions from the public on this item? Okay.
And nine is a resolution authorizing the city manager and city controllers transfer funds within the 2021, 2022 budget.
Control, we're ready. Control, we're ready.
So as we're entering the last couple of months of fiscal year, in order to operate efficiently, we need to.
Can you imagine, Mike?
Hello? Yes. Okay. We need to begin, and this item has to do with the fact that we're entering the last couple of months of our fiscal year. At that point, majority of the budget, funds in the budget are already used up. So in some cases, we need to re-allocate between different lines. When this city council votes on the budget and adopts it, it gives me an authority to send up to the budget. So if one of the departments need something to buy, purchase order, or repair, or something, not necessarily an emergency, but even in the general course of business, in regular course of business, I have no authority to authorize these expenses. So I have to go back to the council and ask them to authorize the transfers. What this will do, it will allow me to sign a law on expenses after performing transfers before having authorization by the city council. I'd like to also point out that we implemented procedures last year where we are not allowing any expenses over the budget unless the department has identified accounts within their budget that have available funds, if that makes sense, right? So let's say if it's a recreation department and they need money in the maintenance line but have excess money in a contracted services line, they would ask me to move money from one line to another, from one account to another. So the reading control of the budget will never be overstated. Once this resolution, resolution was approved last year, the email went to all city employees that stated that this is, how this will be operationalized. If you need money, if you need extra money for a certain purchase or service, departments need to identify where this funding is coming from. And also, we will be reporting on all the transfers as they go on, and they go on and tell the board it's our issue, because if the board it is not finalized until January of the following year, and we receive an invoice and have to transfer funds to public and same ones, the transfer will continue to occur. So we post full transfer report on the website and show them to the city council.
So one of the things I want to say, based on Mr. Gustaf's statement, in these budgets, when we do the transfers between line items, we are not adding to the budgets. This is where in a budget, it is an estimate of what the line item will be. When the line item is over, the department head goes within their own budget and say, I want you to transfer from this line item. One, for example, was because the cost of gasoline went up. So we needed additional monies in gasoline, and so that we transferred money from one line item to another. It has no effect on the bottom line of the budget, none whatsoever. We're not increasing revenues to the budget, we're not increasing expenses, we're just doing transfers. What happens typically is any transfer that's over $1,500 comes to the council as we are transferring from one line item to another. But at the end of the fiscal year, we do several transfers to put things into, to have them closer, the budget to be closer to actual, which does help us in future budgets, that we identify what is closer in the actual to budget in the future. And then at the end, when we're done, the council and the public can see all of the items that we transferred. Again, these transfers have no effect on the bottom line of the budget. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah. These transfers have no upper limit?
No.
No upper limit.
That is correct.
All right, thanks.
Any questions from the public on this item?
And ten is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a joint promotion agreement with Metro Police Transportation Authority for the MTA getaway package.
This resolution basically formalizes the agreement between Royal Railroad and the city for, I think the title of the date is the MTA getaway package. This is the beach pass agreement that we shared with the MTA whereby they sell Round Trip, Railroad Fair, and a voucher as part of the getaway package. The vouchers then exchanged on the boardwalk for a beach pass. We billed the MTA for the amount of vouchers that we collect and they sent us a check in. They do all work, I mean, they They do all work, I mean, they market it, they advertise it, they make the push. And essentially what we do is we are those people that come to the beach front of the city with a $12 beach pass, which is the equivalent of a non-resident economy. And obviously, it's promoted by our local businesses. We try to provide with the voucher, bus transportation. If somebody gets off the train and wants to go to a beach next month, it'll walk the distance and bump scraps on the ground, spread across town as well.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Joe, so do you know how the MTA promotes it? Is it like in the cars, you know, on?
In the cars, at end station, and then obviously on their websites, in their machines. Part of the issue that we had is the amount of lead time they need, take spots for them to program, and then into their, into their systems in order to make this available by morning through midnight.
That's worth targeting with tonight?
Yeah, no, we're on point. I mean, it took a little bit longer, and Mr. Barrios probably speak to it a little better than I do. Where this used to be almost like a paragraph, where you could leave more at the railroad. It is now, I guess, a little bit more in-depth legal document with the MTA. But everything has been done, myself began negotiations, or conversations, it wasn't pretty much a negotiation, in early January with it, because they want to be ahead of it. They've taken a beat in the last couple of years, obviously with COVID. We had the getaway package available until July last year. So from both of our perspectives, we wanted to develop an upper limit to go on for morning through midnight.
Mr. Brandt, 100% correct. The thing that changed was that the Royal Railroad handled the agreement previously, and now the MTA formally handles the difference, so it's just a lot more to deal with and a lot bigger.
Sorry, I can join this. Gentlemen, a little bit of question on the trolley. The trolley works seven days a week during the summer?
Yeah, it's part of transportation, it'll give me what I know from a recreation standpoint, but go ahead. I don't know much about the trolley, you're talking about the bus trolley that drives to?
The trolley that brings them to the beach?
Well, it's not just the trolley, it's the buses in general. Where if they were to get off of, off the train with a getaway package, beach pass, voucher, they can get on any one of the buses to get around town.
Okay, so those are running. I just don't like the idea that they're obligating ourselves to provide the trolley with this package.
No, it's not an additional trolley.
It's not?
It's the regular bus service.
Are you suggesting we modify the resolution? Because it does say trolley in there. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, just change that to trolley for bus.
Do we have a second? Off second.
So what are we changing trolley to?
Trolley, so it says trolley for bus.
What paragraph?
Changing trolley to trolley for bus, correct? Sorry, do you have a second?
Yes.
Councilor, question?
Yes.
It's overlasted?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Any more questions from the council? So now are there any questions from the public on this item?
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of the capital program for the next five years. Authorizing publication of the general summary of proposed budget for the year July 1st, 2022, through January 23. Notice the public hearings are on. The items are publication or need adhering to BS bottles. Capital program, May 17, at 7:00 p.m., budget public hearings, May 3rd and 17th, at 7:00 p.m., and work sessions on the budget, April 26th and May 10th, at 7:00 p.m. And 12 is read?
I'm sorry, can we get to number five, number 13 now?
I think we called that a war.
Yes, please.
Item 15 is added by the NAC's consent, is a resolution authorizing publication of hearing of orders authorizing financing for construction and reconstruction improvements to the city's waste water treatment plant, appropriating one million six hundred thousand dollars for such purpose, authorizing issues of the one million six hundred thousand dollar bonds to finance said appropriation. The items are publication or need adhering to the August 3rd, 7:00 p.m. Certainly back to item 12. The resolution authorizing the city council to have confidential correspondence prepared on behalf of the city council and to have such correspondence in certain persons, known to the council and all of the litigation.
Good evening all, I know I've been here for a long time, it is my recommendation since because this is referencing pending litigation that someone make a motion to adjourn executive session to discuss the substance of this resolution.
I'll make the motion until it's been suspended.
Any questions, does offer a motion, do we have a second?
Let's adjourn executive session for pending litigation.
I second.
Okay, this time?
Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
No.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
You're in executive session. To the folks who are watching online, this stream is going to end. And we're going to close the news stream, that's all city council means, when I think of 22. Part two, which will be scheduled to start in the next day to Monday.
Now, it's 5:00 to 5:00.
And moving on to the voting portion of the.
Are we done with the party still? Yeah, we're having a session.
We are. We are, and told we are out of the session?
You're having executive session, it's a long one.
Okay. At this time? Is there further discussion between the council?
We can't open this to the public, but just in order to, we can't really discuss what was discussed in executive session. I apologize for that, but we do open it to the public for questions.
No questions.
Okay, on to the voting. Item 1 was table. Item 2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement between the city of Long Beach, Commissioner of Buildings and Property Conservation, Scott Kimmens, and the city of Long Beach, Zonie Bull, and P.S. Park, and Red Valley Building LLC. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Obstand.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 3 is a resolution authorizing the city's corporation council to enter into stipulation to settle between the city of Long Beach Tax Access Waiting Flyer and Pacific Building LLC. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
No.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a new ambulance for the city's fire department. I'm a resource worker. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase various chemicals on as-needy basis for war purification plant from the lowest responsible bidder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 6 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase sodium hydrochloride from the lowest responsible bidder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 7 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract to make new work in various locations of the city of Long Beach on as-needy basis for the lowest responsible bidder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 8 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase an interoperable vehicle management system and integrated surveillance system in New York State Office of General Services contracts. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 9 is a resolution authorizing the city manager and the city controllers to transfer funds between the 21-22 budget. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
No.
Councilor Banda?
I vote the same way every year, and I think this is part of our city council fiduciary, all decide responsibilities, so I vote no.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a joint promotion agreement with Metropolitan Transportation Authority with an MTA way package. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Yes, thank you.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of the capital program for the next five years. Authorizing publication of the general summary of proposed budget for the year July 1st, 2022, through January 23. Notice the public hearings are on. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing the city council to have confidential correspondence prepared on behalf of the city council and to have such correspondence in certain persons, known to the council and all of the litigation. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
No.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Councilor Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing publication of the Florida's corporalizing financing for construction and reconstruction of improvements to the city's waste water treatment plant, probably $1,600,000 for such purpose, authorizing issues to $1,600,000 to finance said propagation. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
City manager's public personnel report is in progress, correct? We may motion close meeting?
I will.
Do I hear that?
I will.
Roy, Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Councilor Lustig?
Yes.
Councilor Banda?
Yes.
Vice President Traston?
Yes.
President McGinnis?
Yes.
President McGinnis, Bill Dodge. From behind the camera.
Ah, there you go. There you go. Hey, Bill Dodge, Long Beach, DUA president. I'm gonna be rolling in at 7 o'clock. President McGinnis, Vice President Traston, council, I just want to say thank you. Some of us were without a contract for 13 years. George Bush was the president the last time that some of us had a contract. You sent us a team, you sent us a team that was focused. Miss Gable, Commissioner Walsh, Ina, Rick Barrios. They came without political animus, they came with a focus and a purpose to solve the problem. And we did, and I just wanted to say thank you for the effort that you all put in, including Commissioner and everybody else. That's all, just thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service. Please keep it alive.
It's late, hello?
I turned it off, I'm sorry.
Okay. Hello? Yes, there. Okay, just wanted to invite you to really to this. On Friday, oh my God, I forgot, Friday, 29th of April, we're having our annual, no, our, it used to be annual until COVID. Tina had, Tina probably, your daughter was one of the last people to be able to go. We have not been able to have it since 2015. So half the high school doesn't even know what it is. But what really is, all the high school kids within the city of Long Beach, probably in that public, are gathered at the high school. It's a total community cooperative effort. The high school donates the space, we raise the money, every virgin can have, practically, donates food. He never sends up, I wish I had pictures from other years, I think 48, remember? The only thing we're not having now is hot dogs, because we don't wish to donate those to until April. But I urge you, just come on down and just see and watch 400 to 500 high school kids having a great time playing pillow hockey and bubble soccer and baseball, the bad ones well, and eating till they drop from 7 until 11. And they're there to enjoy themselves without alcohol or any of the drugs, and that's the whole point. They can, and they do. And they look, I went to, I guess we stole on a run, and I was asking for donation, and somebody behind the counter said, oh, yeah, oh, I gotta talk to that because I went there and I loved it. It's my favorite thing, my sister has it on speed again. So that's one thing. The other thing that we're doing in partnership with the police department is on the next day, I think it was DEA's National Drug Takeback Day, and so from 10 to 2 in front of the city hall. Thank you. Thank you to Damian, to a great job, Tina. Vern Mallard? Vern Mallard? Jay Deven? Amy Alveda? Yes, ma'am? Kathy Nolery?
Kathy Nolery, Long Beach. I've been texting with Robin Donovan this week, got to that. And she had a suggestion since the firefighters are getting new equipment. She wanted to ask if they could donate the used equipment for the crane. And Steve Malone is asking, well, actually, he's saying Suffolk Churches are appealing for humanitarian crisis. And also donations are accepted at Eisenhower Park. And Teddy Roosevelt's executive building is submitted on the EOL. Me next, Steve.
Hello?
Hi.
Okay, I won't speak long because we're all tired. But tomorrow is April 20, which for some reason is significant to people who enjoy consuming cannabis. Anyway, at 4:20 PM, some of us will be out from the city hall handing out literature and information. And basically sharing our vision of what we see like the talent and like, you know, post retailization. So we invite all of you, whether you're in favor, against, or not sure, and especially members of the council, city government, to come join us. And we should be there from 4:20 for about two hours or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Joey Deven?
I won't be long either. Just wanted to make a joke. Today I'm 7:00 to 2:00 in Long Beach. I just wanted to make a, it's a suggestion that I've made before, but there's a lot of discussion about our, with regards to beach pricing, non-residents going to another beach because it's cheaper, and how to not displace them because you're attracting, you want to attract that capital. And so we also are looking at parking spaces and the downtown parking, I think, is going to push people to park more, it's free, which is going to displace a lot of home residents parking. And I just want to repeat my suggestion of looking into congestion pricing and move of our iron rain around the city. We could use the infrastructure that could incentivize people to carpool more instead of just having people avoiding parking spots on certain parts of town. And parking, parking more is going to be very pleasant. That's all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
It's not a hit or any more.
And Jay Dussel?
Good evening, Jay Dussel. Item number 12. Would you guys keep that? Did you open that to public discussion?
Yes.
I'm sure. Okay. Okay, good. I'm going to get to ask some questions that I want to ask. Then I'll get to the last one. I don't understand why this correspondence being issued by the council in connection with litigation. As we stated pretty quickly earlier, council doesn't get involved in day-to-day management of the city. So if we're talking about litigation later, it would seem to me that if called council or outside council, if there is outside council, or if there ever exists a city manager, will be the people with whom correspondence with litigation would be exchanged and not the city council. I just want to know, again, I want to answer my last question. Anyway, on whose advice is the council proceeding this way? Because I've been to a lot of meetings, and I've never seen a civil resolution appear on council in general. And again, without getting into specifics of litigation or the person, I know you have to cover about that, what rule or law are we operating with regard to this correspondence? I haven't said it's litigation, but it seems to me if this was a settlement, and it should have gone beyond the correspondence phase, it went out, and ultimately come before council for approval for this approval of any settlement. So can you at least tell me what legal authority we're proceeding on here?
What I can say, Mr. Guste, is just general concepts of, because obviously, council act as a body. They can't do anything without acting as a body. They have to go on certain acts. If they wish to resolve, to do something formally, it should be, it should be through this mechanism. It's not exactly, I can't, it's not completely really to me, but I can't really go into detail on that. But the council does have to resolve to try and deliver its own methods.
The council is a whole making body. It's responsible to the resolution that had debate and decided not to approve them, not to have the council responsibility of issue correspondence in connection with litigation.
I understand your point. You also have a big point that we should be more direct than, and I get open. I'm just saying it's a general premise.
First, I wish the council would be more involved, but I understand tonight the constraints we're facing. Just one general observation based on events tonight. Seems to me that Councilman Luster asks the most questions on most of the items today. And I'm just wondering if he is just curious in our two guys, or if he is somehow being excluded from certain things. And the reason I ask that is because, again, with apologies to somebody, I'm not, I'm in the air as well. I remember sitting in these chambers and hearing the city council president tell another member that he was going to be excluded because if he wants to be the opposition, he'll be the opposition. I hope that that's not the one I'm discussing.
I just comment that we have a procedure, I, as president, keep a spreadsheet of questions from the council members based on a preliminary agenda and then the complete agenda. I maintain that within the Sherport Drive, within the city's network. Last week, the agenda went out. And as of this past Monday, only me and another council member, Vanda, were the only ones that had questions. We do this to try to leave the last minute questions for the staff. And basically to make our council meetings more efficient. So that is an internal process that we have to try to, so we're not here to advertise that we're asking a lot of questions. We're going to work with the city to address the question, to get our answers, and make informed decisions. I hope that helps. Mr. Vanda, do you have a question that covered?
I was just going to say, secondly, there are a lot of questions asked before the meeting. We're trying to do that to get as much background information as we feel we need to do our due diligence and not have meetings that go this late as we're asking here. So.
I can tell.
And like, right before we meet. Right. And tonight, you can ask the staff. You've got to drive them nuts because we pepper them with questions.
And I understand the desire of being able to streamline meeting order. But I hate the, the councils didn't give full access. All members of council aren't given full access to the information. Thank you.
Mr. Guste, I just do want to say one thing about what President McGinnis said. Yes, it's true that questions are not necessarily asked more than once or twice. If you asked something two, three weeks ago, and you ask it again, and you ask it again, and you still don't have a question, and you still don't have an answer, then it doesn't seem to make sense to ask it publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for sticking, sticking around.